Do we need to do any testing? Or have we already tested?
Right, real quick.
Okay.
Test.
Test.
Okay, now we need to sing.
I'm good.
You start.
We'll have to bring our kids in. Well, I'll start by calling this meeting to order. And we'll start with roll call.
Kim Bailey.
Here.
Barbara Boucher.
Here.
Maria Davies.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Present.
Ryan Wesco.
Present.
Kim York.
Here.
All right, and we'll start with a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes. Tonight's all about budget planning. So, I think with that, I will just turn it over to Dr. Monsis.
All right. Appreciate everybody's time this evening to talk a little bit about budget planning. And I will start with a few general comments. And then, from there on, Cindy and I will kind of tag-team different parts of the documents and with help from others throughout the time as needed. Typically, at this point in the process, we probably are a little more confident in our numbers than what we are right now, in part because the state budget process is running probably three or four weeks behind what it normally does. With the new administration and the timeline for the governor to submit his budget and then the legislators to start responding to that, they're a little behind schedule. So that typically by the time we're having this meeting, we've got a really solid grasp of what the state budget will be. We've made a pretty good educated guess, I think, at this point. I wouldn't anticipate major swings in either direction on what the numbers are we're going to show you this evening. But I just want to qualify that a little bit up front. We've got some unknowns there that are a little less defined than what they would normally be at this time in the year. So, we're going to walk through the documents. We've got them for you in hard copy as well as electronically there in board docs. But sometimes when you're looking at small numbers, it's helpful to have the piece of paper as well. So, we've got that provided for you. And it goes without saying, this is first Cindy's first process with us in budget development here at the district. And she's really learned a lot and is doing a good job with the planning and understanding of what we're working with. And so, we're working together quite a bit on some of this. So, with that, we will kind of start working our way through the documents. And we won't necessarily spend a lot of time in any one document unless you have lots of questions. And we'll take as much time as we need to then, with the caveat that if there's something we can't answer tonight, we'll definitely work towards getting you the answer as soon as we can. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Cindy and she'll start with a few of the lead-in documents.
Okay, so, starting with page one, we've got the budget development calendar. I know many of you are very familiar with the calendar, but we'll go through just to give an overview of how it all gets developed. You know that this year's budget is going to have many changes from previous year's budgets because of the building re-conviguration and long-range facility plan. It's not only because of the additional capital expenditures that we talked about at your last meeting, but because every building in the district is going to have a different student body or at least a different enrollment size next fiscal year. So, it's quite a few changes. So, our activities related to budget development began with determining the budget and the building enrollments last fall when we started out with the boundary committees. And last fall, Dr. Volker and his staff also began developing the preliminary plans for the early learning center. And in January, we began collecting the funding requests, as we always do, from the building and department administrators. And we also began formulating our employee cost projections with estimates for the salary steps and benefit cost increases. Then in February, Lisa Hatfield completed her work on the staffing placement. And at the February boardwork session, Dr. Pettingill presented the information on the capital improvement projects. Dr. Monsis and I updated the revenue projections for 17, 18 as best we could, given the limitations that he just described a moment ago. And the cabinet reviewed and prioritized the requested expenditures, so we're going to be able to present those to you tonight. There are still some decisions that are to be made by Team Ray Peck to finalize their recommendations to you on the staffing, salaries, and benefits. And at your regular board meeting later this month, you'll be presented with those recommendations and the staffing recommendations that we're going to discuss tonight. Then throughout April and May, we'll be finalizing our expenditure budgets with the meeting with the building administrators and department heads, updating the revenue projections as we can so that we'll have a recommended budget to present to you at the board retreat in June. And then we'll have a final budget document that you should feel comfortable approving at your June regular board meeting. Are there any questions about the development calendar or the development process itself? Okay, then we can move on to page two, which is the operating revenue summary. So, this page summarizes for you the various operating revenues. And it shows in the first column, last year's actual revenue, that's fiscal year 15, 16. The second column is the current fiscal year's budget as it was amended at your January meeting. And the third column shows our projected revenues for fiscal year 18. And then, the last column is showing the change between fiscal year 16, 17, and 17, 18. So, starting up with the local revenues, we're projecting around a 5% increase in property taxes, which is going to come primarily from new construction. And we'll talk about this calculation in a little more detail in a later page, so I'll move on here. Proposition C revenue projections are really just a shot in the dark at this point, but we're currently projecting about a 4% increase there. And we can update that as we get more information on projections from the state. The financial institution tax and M&amp;M surcharge tax lines are pretty small budget lines in total, but you'll see a pretty good-sized increase there. And that's because, in the past, those revenues have been paraded between the operating funds and the debt service fund. But we can place those monies in any fund at our discretion. So, we are proposing to place those all in the operating funds, since the debt service funds don't need that money. Food service and student activities revenues are always projected to break even in the budget. So, those revenue line items are based on what we project for the expenditures, and those will be modified as the expenditures are fine-tuned. Down under the state revenues, the basic formula revenues are projected to increase slightly based on our projected enrollments and a small increase in the state adequacy target. And we'll talk about that calculation a little bit more later also. Transportation revenue is projected to decrease. We've been talking about this almost all year. We don't know really if we've even got that decreasing enough yet, but the governor says he's going to put another 11 million towards transportation, which if that does in fact happen, we're probably pretty close with the $805,000 estimate there. Special ed and federal funds, our projections in here are based on the grant applications that we've already calculated and sent in. Our title funds are expected to decrease a little bit in 17, 18 because we were able to pick up some carryover from the prior years in the current year. So, and we don't expect that to happen again next year. We also have a decrease in the other federal. That was the 90,000 that we were able to receive this year is for class-size reductions that were accomplished last year. We get the funds this year. We didn't qualify for that during the current year, so we won't see those funds next year. So, we're going to go over some of these in more detail on the following pages, but are there any questions about the overview, the overview level? Anything you want to add at this point?
No, I think you covered it pretty well. Okay, so, the next document, when Michelle pulls it up here, is our, what we call our budget planning tool. And this is our multi-year planning tool. And we're going to spend probably a little bit more time with this, talking about some of the assumptions that are in there. Just a minute for the computer to catch up. It's acting slow right now. So, as she's working towards that, I'll go ahead and start talking about it verbally here, and it'll catch back up here shortly. So, what this tool, you've seen it before. It's something we've been using for a few years now. It's to take a multi-year look at our overall budget. It has a prior year budget amount. It shows what it was last year. It has the current year budget, what we've got in plans for this year, has next year, and then three additional years beyond that. So, really, the 17, 18 column is the third column there. And we're going to spend most of our time talking about that column. So, if you want to find that in your document. The first line there is the assessed valuation. It shows 520 million estimated assessed value for next year, which is that approximate 5% increase. So, what we've got going now, this is a reassessment year. So, in addition to the new construction, the assessor's office will be revaluing property throughout the district. And the information we've been receiving so far is that, on average, values are going up. So, we have estimated a 5% increase. We were in the 2.8% range last year, just with new construction. And then, we're assuming it'll be at least that much new construction plus some reassessment increase. We actually have heard from the assessor's office that it could be a much higher-than-5% increase. But if it is higher than 5% or approximately 5, 5.2%, if it's any higher than that, the tax rate calculation will cause us to lower our levy. So, we can only capture one year's worth of CPI growth or Consumer Price Index growth. So, there's about a 2% add we can capture of new value due to reassessment. Anything above that's just going to cause us to roll back our tax levy. So, that's why, even though we think it could be as high as 8% or 10% increase in property values, we can only capture 5%. So, we've kept our levy, which is the second line, operating levy, right at our current level with a 5% increase in property values. If it's a 10% increase in property values, that 370 levy will go down to get us back to that equivalent percentage. It's kind of how it works. And we do that in August. So, we won't have those final numbers till June. We will get a better estimate in usually by, in April. But quite frankly, if it's 5% or 10%, the net impact on our revenues won't matter, quite frankly, because it'll just be an equal offset in the levy.
And we haven't increased our levy for how many years now?
It's, we're in the neighborhood of 14 or 15 years of being at the same levy.
So, now, can we, if we need to, can we increase our levy without having to go to a vote of the people because of the, there's something with Hancock. And I always forget exactly the structure under which it works.
Yeah, it's very tricky. There's a lot of interactions in that calculation. But as long as our property values grow more than CPI, we're going to be actually reducing our operating levy. 375 is our highest voted levy for operating. We're below that now, at around 370. And basically, if these property values are to grow anything faster than CPI, we're going to be lowering our operating levy. We would, it would require a vote to go anything above what that Hancock calculation would tell us it would be. What we've been doing for many years is, as that levy fluctuates a few pennies on the operating side, we've made an equal adjustment on the debt service side so that our overall levy stayed exactly the same. So, in the short term, that's probably what we would look at. At some point long-term, if we have enough reserves in debt service, the overall levy could actually come down at some point. That's a, it depends on how fast property values grow. So, we've assumed that roughly 5% growth, knowing that even if it's higher than that, we're going to lower the operating levy as required by law, so that that will be all we can capture. So, what we've tried to do here with this tonight, you know, we've talked previously about the fact that with all the transition work, we've got some one-time expenditures that we know we have to do. A lot of capital improvements. We had a list in front of you in February that was over $2 million worth of capital improvement projects. And then, we've also got some startup things with additional furniture and tech infrastructure and some things like that that go along with the high school project that we'll need to take care of. So, there's a big chunk of one-time funds we'll need to finish this transition process. And we've already kind of talked about that a little bit. What I've tried to do is layer that in here with some thoughts of what we can possibly do with salary and benefits for our staff and account for any new staff that we're going to be talking about here in a few minutes. So, there are multiple pieces to this puzzle. So, this is our attempt, our tool, to try to capture it all in one document. So, I'll kind of continue down that 17, 18 document and talk about some of the other assumptions that are built into this. So, the salary consideration for our existing staff, it shows a 2% number there. That's roughly equivalent to our steps in all of our schedules. So, just to operate the schedule and add a step experience, for experience for our staff is approximately 2%. So, that's what that's trying to capture. Salary costs for new staff positions, that 0.5% roughly generates enough money to cover the new staffing that we're going to be suggesting to you this evening and probably asking you to approve as early as next week. Health insurance increase, we've got an estimate number there of 15%. So, we've been talking, I think, for the last couple of months that we know our loss ratios have been running high. We have had some ongoing discussions with our broker and the information they've gotten from the insurance carrier. The formal notice from the insurance carrier was a 26.2% average increase with no plan changes, based on our loss ratios. We met with our broker yesterday. That has been negotiated down to 22.74% with no plan changes. But quite frankly, that's such a big number in terms of our overall budget. Doing that and steps, in my mind, is probably not practical or possible this year. So, that's our challenge, is we've got a year where we've got a big, huge insurance number to layer in on top of all the other things we're doing, so.
We've talked at different times through the years with all these increases about adjusting our base plan that we're able to offer and fully cover.
Correct.
Has that been still in the negotiations, or?
Yes, I think our thought right now is that we would try to identify a base plan that we could still pay 100% of, and then still leave some buy-up options for those who want to go to a richer plan, if you will. That's our thought right now.
If our insurance increase, excuse me, is based on our loss ratio, then how is it negotiated?
Well, obviously, Blue Cross has assumptions in their calculation when they do this. Their trend assumptions and, you know, their actuaries look at probably more than just a year's worth of history. They probably do a more long-term review of that. And CBIZ has their own actuaries that do the same thing. So, there's some back and forth in that discussion. That's a pretty normal annual process. I think Blue Cross is used to, you know, any insurance carrier, I think, is used to asking for the most they think they could possibly get, and then you work on it from there, so.
When was the last time our plan was shopped out for a different carrier?
Two years ago.
And then, the next question is, is if we ever looked into being coming self-insured?
We do have some options to consider there. One, a lot of advisors would tell you, you need 1,000 lives, and we're about to that point with our employees and their families. We're getting close. I don't know what the number is. That was, I thought that was the employees only.
Because I've seen it done and very successful at 150 employees.
Okay.
And with major cost savings.
Yeah, that is something we need to look into, I think. I think that another option for us is to look at another pool, a self-insurance pool that's bigger than even just us. That's an option for us. There are a handful of districts in the Kansas City metro that have already gone together to do that. And some of them are even much larger districts. And the advantage there is, when you get that pool large, instead of getting a 0% one year like we did last year and 22 the next, you tend to get five to seven to eight more consistent increases over time with a larger pool. That's just the nature of it, when you lump more lives together. So, I'm a little hesitant to go fully self-insured. Our plan is kind of a quasi-self-insured plan as it is. In other words, if our losses were actually to be less than what our rates are in terms of our volume, we would actually get a discount. So, ours is set up that it's a maximum price increase, but if we don't actually have the claims, we won't use it all. We won't have to pay in. So, we're in a modified plan as it is now. That was all driven by the ACA requirements and discussion about how we want to meet those. So, that's probably a two-hour meeting by itself to kind of walk through all those pieces of that. It is a challenge for us. There's no doubt about it. You know, I think my best thought is, let's work on the plan as best we can this year. And then, next year's a natural bid year for us anyway, and that's the best time to be exploring other options all throughout the year versus kind of waiting until the spring, if we will.
And I didn't mean to throw that into this budget process.
No.
It sparked the thought.
Yeah, we've been having the same conversations.
And because I'd like to see what, if we investigated going totally self-insured, what that would be. I've worked for organizations that have done it, some very large, 3,000 or 4,000 employees. But I've also seen where, I know a few counties have gone to self-insurance, or they've only had 150 to 200 employees, and they've saved, you know, upwards to hundreds of thousands of dollars by doing it. So, the savings can be very substantial, and you get to craft your own plan. So, there's more, you have more freedom and flexibility.
Sure, sure. So, that 15%, hold on to that number for a little bit, because if we get to the bottom of this page, we're going to talk about a kind of a bigger-picture concept, if you will. The next line there is increase for supplies and purchase services of 4%. And so, what that represents is all of our non-salary and benefit line items collectively across all of our budgets, all those supply-purchase-service-type codes, we're projecting a 4% increase, which equates to about $600,000. That's a much bigger number than we would normally do, but about half of that is the one-time stuff we need to do to get, to get the high school furnishings and equipment that we need to add in yet. And to say, for South Middle School, we've got things like some instruments for band and some uniforms for activities that we need to do that's the one-time type expenditures. So, that 4% is probably twice what it would normally be, but again, that half of it is the one-time stuff that we wouldn't have to do the next year. In fact, if you just go to the next column over, you see a 0% instead of 2% there with the idea that that's the other 2%. You just absorb any other increases the following year out of what would have been spent on one-time money for next year. So, that's the assumption there.
Are those purchases going to be made through ASC with the 4%?
There are a wide range of purchases all across. So, some of them will be bid items of, you know, if we're talking, our furniture would be items that have been bid through a cooperating school district bid of some sort. Like our technology pieces, Ryan has done a formal bid process for those. So, it just depends on what it is. The vast majority of them will have something. It just depends on what the nature of the item is. Some of them will just be simply getting three quotes and taking the best price. It just depends on the scale of it. The next area that follows is our assumptions on the state formula. The state formula is a big chunk of our operating budget, obviously. Property tax and state formula are the two biggest line items we have, obviously, for revenues. So, you see our state adequacy target estimate is 61, 60. We're being paid right now this year on the 61, 45 you see in the column before. The truth is, if all the revenues were there to support the formula, because it has dozens of revenue sources feeding it, we could potentially finish this year above 61, 60 if they were all there. So, we're somewhat conservative, and Desi's telling us they expect the 61, 45 to go up rather than down. There are still some legislators talking about trying to fully fund the formula, which would take it all the way up to 62, 41 and bring in significant money. But I'm not overly optimistic yet, and I'm certainly not ready to budget any of that yet. And you do see a 35-student count increase in our weighted average daily attendance. So, that's part of the reason why we're budgeting an increase. We're in a situation in our district statewide comparison-wise to where, even if they don't put money in the formula, in the budget, we could get more money because we're adding students, and there are other districts who are losing students. So, even if the sum total doesn't change, we could get more money, and that's kind of what we're expecting now. The 35 overall increase is less than what we had this year, but we're in another year where we're going to graduate a bigger class than what we're bringing in. So, we're not getting too aggressive with that estimate. It could easily go up another 15 or 20 students. It wouldn't surprise me, but I think that's a reasonable place to be right now. And it's also is assuming we're going to have a pretty comparable summer school this summer as to what we had last summer. So, those are some of the major players in this puzzle, if you will. And so, then, the middle section tries to capture all the revenues and expenditures. And there are pages behind this page that feed into this, that we don't even really need to spend time looking at, other than just to say, those assumptions at the top are built into the numbers that come in the middle of the page there. So, you'll see a total revenue number of 60.8 million, which ties into the sheet Cindy just covered. You'll see a total expenditure number that's also around 60.8 million. Now, what's not accounted for yet is the fact that we transfer some of our money to capital projects every year, so that we're going to talk about that in a little bit. The other thing that's not accounted for is the fact that we have staff members who leave each other through retirement or resignation, that on average, we hire in somebody that usually costs a little less money. It's, we call it turnover savings. It's a normal part of our process, but it's the assumption of a 2% increase in salaries assumes everybody that's here this year would be here next year. So, we need to account for the fact that we know we're going to have some turnover savings, and that's what that $300,000 represents there. So, the expenditures assume everybody's going to be here and get the same increase. We back off 300,000 on average is what we typically save. And Lisa just did a four-year analysis of that, and that's been our average. So, it's a pretty good estimate number. This year, we probably actually have a few more than the average year. So, I think it's a pretty safe number. So, in the end, we back that back out, and that lowers our expense number down a little bit. So, then the question becomes, how does this all play into our balances? So, we take all of that revenue expenditure number, and the bottom part of the table really takes our current carryover balance, what we started the year with in operating funds, takes into consideration all of these assumptions that we've got in play here, and then also accounts for however much money we're going to transfer to capital projects. So, what you'll see is that we're projecting at the end of this year, we'll have about 14.2 million left in our operating reserve. At our low point of the year, and at the end of November, this year, we were at about 7.7 million roughly in balances at our low point in November, because that's before the property taxes start coming in. So, with the proposal we're giving you this evening as a concept, it would be closer to 5 million at this, at that point next year. So, it'd still be a pretty healthy reserve, but you're going to see a scenario where we could end up below 20% by a little bit. So, I just kind of wanted to kind of start walking you through that. So, the transfer is in that lower part of the page at $3 million to capital projects. So, you saw a list, I believe it was last month, of about $2.6 million worth of projects we wanted to accomplish this summer. That's the renovations at Bridle Ridge, Eagle Glen, Shaw, including playgrounds, and some to the building itself. A lot of asphalt work here on this south campus between South Middle School and the high school that needs to be completed to finish that part of the project, and a variety of other smaller projects throughout the district, some tech infrastructure included in all that. The $3 million capital funds transfer will allow us to do about 2.4 million in projects. That's the assumption that goes with that, because some of that transfer goes to pay for lease payments that we already have on the books. So, not all of that gets used for projects, but that $3 million transfer number does allow us to do 2.4 million. We have scheduled all of our bid openings on all of our major projects for the 23rd of this month. And the special meeting we've asked you for on the 30th of this month is to consider all of those bids. So, we'll have all those big pieces at the same time to look at, so that when we're awarding those and picking what alternates, I mean, we may or may not want to do, we've got all of that in front of you at the same time. So, that's been a pretty significant undertaking by Dr. Pettingill, Scott Dobson, and our design team to try to get all those projects lined up to be in front of you at the same time. So, that $3 million transfer is much larger than it normally is. We've been running 1.4 to 1.6 million. And when we've done that, we've just been doing about a million dollars worth of projects. So, pretty significant jump there, which is going to cause us to use reserves. And we've talked about that already to a certain extent in some of our, like our last work session. So, when all of that's accounted for, including that transfer, you see a $2.6 million use of reserves there. Again, that transfer is what's driving the vast majority of that, and those roughly $300,000 of one-time operating funds as well. So, when you put all those pieces together, but not for those, that number would be a lot closer to a zero balance, if you will. So, that's kind of what's driving that. And you'll see at the bottom then, with all of those assumptions in play, our reserves dropped down to about 19% roughly, so.
So, the 2.6 million deficit spending, how much of that is one-time cost?
Well, I think we could quantify all of it as one-time cost.
So, to walk through the process, because it's a one-time expense, next year, if everything remains constant in the budget, our reserve would be replenished?
It wouldn't be replenished. It would be a budget that we could get to zero if we needed to. And that replenishing, to me, would mean putting it all back into reserve, so.
And that, correct.
Get us back in balance within a year if we needed to. The answer is certainly, there'd be no doubt, again, that out of the $3 million transfer, we would have to transfer roughly 600,000 to make our lease payments. So, all that other money is a choice of whether or not we're going to put it over there to fund projects or not. Now, we would need to Now, we would need to do some of that regardless. So I wouldn't recommend we'd cut the three hundred, the three million all the way down to the minimum six hundred thousand. We'd probably want to go back to the one point four, the one point six million. Um, so the answer is though, there are enough discretionary line items and discretion with the transfer that we could get it back to zero in a year if we had to. We're actually proposing doing it in a couple of years with the assumptions we've got right now. So that it's a, a more gradual, uh, transition to zero. So that's where the multi-year view here has us dropping down to around eighteen percent. And probably not getting back all the way to zero in, in one year, but doing it over two years. So just kind of, that's the soft landing type approach that we've been talking about for a couple of years.
And just for perspective, danger range is considered three percent.
That's where the state tells everybody.
You're in trouble.
That you're in trouble.
Right.
But really for us, somewhere in that, I don't know, we were probably in the ten or twelve percent range, uh, at year-end balances where we would be in jeopardy of maybe needing to borrow funds to make payroll prior to December taxes coming in. So even with this assumption, we're, we're, we're pretty comfortable. We'd have five million in reserve at our low point during next year. So that's, I think, the analysis we've done so far. So that's about one month's worth of extra cushion, if you will, so.
So what percentage of reserve i- is that threshold? I mean, that we definitely don't want to fall below so where we don't have to, to borrow, is, is that, was that the twelve percent?
Yeah, I think in the, in the, at the year-end ti- timeframe, we would need to be somewhere around, I think, twelve to maybe a little more percent to avoid being below zero dollars at November.
What, oh, go ahead.
I say, what is our bonding company like? They like, it's closer to eighteen to twenty?
Our auditor is, they like twenty percent.
Okay.
And.
Your auditor would love a hundred percent.
Sure, sure. They're very safe, so.
Right.
But, but I got, and the reason why I ask that is that i- if there's some projects that we want to consider, you know, in, in the projec- the, the projection that you're giving us is nineteen percent. Well, we need to maintain fifteen percent for that comfort threshold. Then we have that four percent that we can evaluate whether or not we want to add additional programs or additional projects to where, you know, as long as we get the ROI on it, i- it's, it's a, it's a safe choice.
Yeah, the, the challenge there is whether or not it's a recurring, a recurring item or not a recurring item.
Projects or programs, it would probably be more projects if programs are recurring. And on the, um, on the, the reserve balance, that's something that the, um, finance audit committee went over at our last meeting and spent probably more time than you, you may have planned. Um, but, um, I, I think it's safe to say we looked at that pretty thoroughly in that meeting and going over, um, the timing of when we need the money and how low we can go. Um, with that, in order to maintain that December balance for December payroll before the taxes come in and still have some cushion, you know, if that was going on and we still needed a month's worth of payments.
But ultimately, it, it's our decision.
Oh, no doubt.
Oh, yeah.
No doubt.
Absolutely.
I had a question with the change in administration and so forth. Um, all of our federal monies, like Title I monies and so forth. Uh, is there any indication that those are going to be changed?
I think there is some discussion about how they deliver those funds to the state, whether or not they're based on a, uh, some type of formula determined at the federal level or if they're given to the states in some block grant form. There's discussion about how it's delivered and some of that could ultimately impact us. There's discussion about, okay, maybe there's going to be a ten percent cross-the-board cut in total. Um, the, the, uh, one, I think it would take a while for that to get to us, probably another year before we would see the impact to us. And two, when you look at our total title and special education monies, um, even if they cut them by ten percent, it's a, it's not as big a number as if something were to happen to our property tax base or our state formula. So it's not a huge exposure, but it is something we definitely need to watch. So we've been fairly con- conservative in our revenue estimate there, um, based on what allocations we can already see. So it's, it is something we need to keep our eye on. Um, but I think, um, I think the gross dollar impact, it won't be, uh, something we can't work around if it were come to pass. It would be, um, again, it's a much smaller piece of our overall budget. Okay, so we're going to come back to this big picture discussion after we run through some additional information because there are a lot of assumptions. And I want you to know that this planning tool is just that, a planning tool. It's a, it, it doesn't matter what point in time we take a snapshot of this. It's going to be wrong between now and June, some way or another. Some things are going to go up, some things are going to go down. Uh, some of the assumptions that we've made, um, we're going to have to adjust moving forward over the next thirty to sixty days. But we wanted to give you a sense of what, in our mind, feeds into this so that you can start giving us feedback on some of the individual areas where we wanted to talk about, uh, staffing programs, uh, capital projects, some of that piece. So next on our list is the s- staffing plan. And in a previous work session, I believe it was January, Lisa gave you an update on our certified staffing plan. Uh, but we focused on that first. And tonight you have a revised document that includes that plus support staff as well. Um, and I want to give credit to Lisa and, uh, all of our administrators who've helped her work on this. Uh, my challenge to the crew was basically, you know, we've got roughly the same number of students next year as this year. It'll increase a little bit, but not dramatically. Um, our reconfiguration is going to cause us to do some things differently. We talked last time about the fact when you take fifth grade out of two intermediates and put them into seven elementaries, the class sizes, just by the nature of it, are going to go down, which requires more staff. Well, other things are happening at the middle school and high school level. Those schedule changes actually pro- provided some opportunities to save a few staffing positions to offset some of those. So I'm really pleased how collectively our entire administrative team looked at this to, uh, to try to get this as manageable as possible, knowing that any money we don't spend on new staff, freeze-up funds to put into our existing staff and some of the projects we might want to accomplish. So, um, I, they've done a good job with it and Lisa's going to summarize that to you. And then the, really the new part will be kind of the support staff. Um, and then we can respond to any questions you might have.
Before you jump in, can I, should I just ask, how did the staff respond to the overall, um, moving of their cheese?
Notice I'm still here.
Yes.
So that's a good sign. Um, I, I think overall it went very well. Certainly there are some staff that didn't get their first choice and I think there's some sadness. Um, I feel very good about the process overall. Um, I've got a lot of emails and just comments from staff as I've been in buildings, thanking the administration for the process that we went through. Um, they felt like what they were interested in was heard. Um, again, I, I, I do know there's some that, you know, wish I would have put them in a different building or at a different grade level. And we're, we're providing that opportunity now as positions become available, they can apply for them. Um, but I think we built some really great teams. Um, it's going to be a good year and, um, as I said, I'm still here. So that's a, a very good sign that they weren't too angry at me, I suppose. Um, the, uh, we're on page nine, we skipped a few pages. And this grid is similar to what you saw in January. This is the certified staffing, um, plan. And again, as I said in January, it was preliminary then and probably the next time I show it to you, there will be changes as well. But overall, we were at the, at the bottom. We had a total of adding four point seven six certified staff. Through schedule changes and other opportunities, we are now down to that being a one point five three FTE add. So that's a significant savings, um, from where we thought we were. And hopefully we'll be able to continue to maybe capture some other savings along the way. What you didn't see in January is on the next page, page ten, and that's our preliminary support staffing plan. This is overall the big categories of support staff that we have. You can see where we are staffed for the sixteen, seventeen school year and then what we're projecting for the seventeen, eighteen. You'll notice that the largest increase in the categories there is our custodial staff. Of course, we are adding quite a large addition, if you didn't know, to the high school that's going to need to be cleaned every night. Um, and I know Larry and Brian, they've really worked hard to try to minimize that number as much as possible. Um, so we're down to a two point six two five there.
Can I, can I add one comment to that? Um, the square footage alone that we're adding to the high school would probably have generated probably four FTE or five additional. But what's happening in other places in the district, we have some spaces that will be underutilized for a sh- a few years until we build back into them. So for example, the north building, when it becomes a middle school, there's probably a whole pod that we may not have to use and clean every day in year one. So there's some additional square footage that lowered that four or five FTE down to the smaller number you see here. So we're trying to, uh, be smart about how we utilize space across the district to try to, um, save on that. Another example would be at the academy or before and after care administrators and some other supported, some other staff are using one of the old office areas. Well, we're going to relocate them to Scholl, so there'll be another place where there's other staff that, in that space, we'll, we'll have less there we need to clean as well. So I'm just giving you a few examples of some areas that we're, won't have to clean as much or as often in the future for at least a year or two, so.
The only reduction on this grid was in a t- teacher associate position. And, and whether, I don't know if you remember or not, but we have three of our elementary schools that based upon need and size, the number of students they had, they actually had two teacher associates instead of one. The numbers through our boundary process, we've balanced. So we haven't, we don't need, I mean, we always would like to have, but we don't need that additional TA at one of our buildings. So that's where that number, um, has changed in that regard. So overall, we're looking at about a three point three seven five, um, FTE increase for our support staff. Um, that started out a little bit higher than that, but we've finessed it and tried to, um, do what we can to get it as low as possible.
I always love when the numbers reflect a, a point three seven five percent or of, of a person.
It's a number of hours.
I, I know, I just, it, it always makes me laugh. It just, it's funny.
Me too.
Any questions?
Questions can I answer for you?
Thank you to all the administrators and principals and all that that worked so hard to figure all of that out so far ahead.
Well, it's a work in progress. There will be ongoing some changes as, you know, positions open up and, and people request to move again, depending on where their assignment was. So, um, at this point, Lisa's communicated to all staff about how that process works, if they're interested in something different that might be open in the district. So, um, it will continue to evolve through the rest of the spring. But, um, I think originally the idea is we'd have that done by the end of March. And early on last summer, early fall, we, we sped that up a month. And I think that's helping us because she's closer to being ready to hire for some of the openings we have, based on getting that, that work done. And I think that everybody's, at least knows now. I mean, that's, that's a big thing for everybody.
Now, are, are we opening those positions up internally before we go outside to fill them?
I'm actually opening them at both at the same time. But the principals are looking at the internal candidates first, just in case there would be no one internally interested. I didn't want to waste the time to repost for external. But yes, we've already begun some of that. Um, I think I had five or six positions posted and two of them had internal folks that actually expressed interest. And those are the individuals that the principals visited with.
Okay, because, you know, i- if we change their position as a part of this process, it's only fair to allow them to have the first right of refusal if that position comes back open.
Right, and that's the process we go through every year. Any of our staff members can apply for any position that we have. And our in- our internal folks always get, you know, preference. But they do participate in the interview process. So if there's two or three, four internal folks, they, they participate in the in- the interview process.
Question. On the K two five at ISS?
Yes.
Why, why did we get rid of those two people?
And.
There's a net change of minus two.
Two, mm-hmm. And right now in our intermediate schools, we have two teachers who are in ISS. They are ISS slash recovery, they're certified positions. Our elementary schools are support positions. So for next year at the elementaries, they're all going to be, be support positions. So the minus two is there under the certified, but those two are picked back up. Yes, it's just a certified versus support.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we wanted to update you on our, our, our current thinking and planning on the early, uh, childhood program expansion. This has been another topic we've had at a couple of, of previous meetings. So, um, the latest version is, is in your packet and it's not dramatically different from what we showed you the last time, but it is somewhat different. I'll try to capture that and, um, uh, Dr. Volker may, may need to add some as well. So basically, one of the assumptions we had or one of the thoughts we've had is to apply for the MPP grant process to the state, which is, uh, one that basically covers a teacher and a support staff member for a full-day classroom. Enough of the grant will pretty much cover a full classroom cost. Um, it appears that that is not going to be available for us at this point in time. So what we've done to modify our, our overall approach, and it didn't change really the bottom line after we did a, a few revisions, is that instead of having, um, we, and I think the last version, we had two full-day classrooms with the assumption at least one of them would get funded through MPP. So that would serve forty kids. And without the MPP, taking those two, uh, full day and making it a one-teacher, uh, with the same number of kids but only half-day, uh, we can serve the same number of kids. Um, so when you do that, I was basically, we're taking the cost of one teacher and one support staff member out of the equation, but we're also taking the grant revenue that would have paid for them out of the equation. So it gets to the same spot at the bottom and it serves the same number of kids, except if they want to be there full day, they're going to have a half-day of instruction with a certified teacher and the rest of the time will be wraparound care. So it would still be a full-day option for those families, but only half-day of it would be the instru- the formal instruction with a certified staff member. So that was, that was our attempt to, okay, if we don't get the grant, can we still find a way to serve the same number of kids that we had anticipated? In this case, we're talking, um, a hundred and twenty through our, uh, our regular pre-K program plus twenty peer models, which is about what we have now, uh, through the Early Childhood Special Education Program. So it, to do what we have in front of you here, it's about an extra, it's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars of district contribution, which is the same number we were showing you the last time. Um, and one of the questions we had is, okay, what's worst-case scenario here? What if they don't show up? Uh, and we've, we've got enough feedback now through our survey that we shared with you last week that we know there's a, there's quite a bit of interest and most of it is full-day interest. Um, but our thought is as long as we have the wraparound piece to go with it, uh, we can accommodate that even if the, the instructional portion's only half-day. And parents always have the choice. They can either just do the half-day or they can do the full day based on, on their preference. So worst-case scenario of that whole list of staffing at the bottom, uh, once we contract those teachers, unless there happened to be a teaching opening that they were certified for, we're probably on the hook for the year on that, um, unless, uh, we were to go through a formal reduction in forced practice, which we generally wouldn't, uh, try to do if we could avoid it. Uh, otherwise, the paraprofessional positions, almost always we have openings there. Otherwise, in the district that they could be, uh, uh, sent to if, if necessary. The Panther Pride folks, same way with the before and after care, if, if necessary. We would have to keep the director for the building because the Early Childhood Special Education is going to be there regardless. So we need a director and a secretary. Um, the nurse, you know, maybe we've got some flexibility there, but, um, a lot of the fixed expenses could be reallocated to other openings, should that be the case. Now, quite frankly, uh, the thought now is that we've got two staff members already identified to be our pre-K teachers. We might wait a little while on the third one, but we're proposing budgeting for that, regardless of when we decide we go ahead and add that, to get to that number of students served.
And on the pro, I'm sorry, on the, on the full day versus half-day?
Mm-hmm.
Just clarify what you were saying. Is it the same program delivered on the full day as the half-day?
It would be slightly different in that if, uh, with the MPP grant and that model, it's, it's basically morning and afternoon with that certified teacher. You could still have wraparound early and late, but they get a full day with a certified teacher. In this half-day model, they're either going to be AM with a certified teacher or PM with a certified teacher. And the other part of the day would be the wraparound care.
So, so the hundred and twelve thousand, that would be out of district pocket. Is that just for the instructional time or does that include covering some of the wraparound?
Uh, the tuition is based on including the instructional time and the wraparound. So the half-day tuition we've got proposed here, and again, we'll bring these back to you for formal approval, it's seventy-five dollars for a half-day. It would include the three hours of instruction plus up to two hours of wraparound care.
Okay.
Whereas a hundred and fifty dollars could get you up to a maximum of ten hours of total wraparound care and instruction. So that's kind of the, the model we try to, rather than try to identify what parts for instruction and what's parts for wraparound, we just split it into, you can do a half-day or you can do a full day. And that's pretty common with a lot of our, a lot of other early childhood centers.
Now, so is, is that rate, is that pretty much on par with market?
I would say it's probably below, in some places, it's on the lower end of it. But I think our thought here is that our, our taxpayers are paying for some of this service already, so there ought to be some discount. And then obviously, if they're free and reduced lunch eligible, we've got further discounts there because that's. there because that's really the population that will benefit the most typically from a program of this sort.
And I would rather see us stay under, you know, a little bit under market. Approach it to where we're competitive, but let's set the pace.
It's a fine balance because we, our goal is not to lower the enrollment in any of the other programs in our community. Our goal is to serve the students collectively across the community that may not be getting served as well right now. And so, that's, to me, I think we stay just below the market so that we're not, you know, competing too strongly there, but yet still having the opportunity to serve the kids that aren't being served now. So, it's a balance, there's no doubt. And I don't know if that's the right number. It'll be something we'll have to analyze every year, I think, to really revisit that.
I had a question about the grant. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you said about why the grant is zero. Was it not available or?
Yeah, here's how it's been explained to me. The, that's, the grant has been funded through, I think, federal sources through a state grant system. And Missouri has used the MPP as their model for delivery. And it's been a really good model for a lot of districts because it basically will cover the teacher and the aide for the entire year for those 20 students or up to 20 students. So, it's been a great program. A lot of school districts have done it. And the beauty of it is it's a five year, if you can renew it up to five years before you have to take it on yourself. So, that's been great. As I understand it, the department that the money had been coming from, that budget area has been reassigned from the Department of Education to the Health and Human Services Department. And that transfer of budget authority has led to them basically taking a pause on issuing the money to the state to be able to dole out through their mechanism or this MPP grant. So, it's a change in federal budget assignment that has driven this situation where the state's not comfortable knowing the money's going to be there in order to even put the grant application out. That's the way I understand it.
So, it might be available in the future?
Yes, yes. And here's what I would say to that. It's possible that maybe this clarifies itself in the next, you know, three or four months. And it's possible that we're applying for this grant in the fall with the idea we might be starting a classroom in January or something like that. Or it's possible it'll take a whole year to figure this out and we come back and talk about applying for more classrooms next year for the next cycle. So, I think it will come back. I just don't know what it'll look like and when it'll be here as an option.
I was in DC last week and there's a move to more, move more of the federal funding from its traditional distribution channels into more block grants, which then will allow the state to have more control, but it's going to lump all the money together. So, whereas before it was earmarked, now it might not be earmarked, we'll get the same amount of money to the state, we just might have to fight for it a little harder.
Certain amount of unknown there. So, we've taken that assumption out of the model and what it looks like in order to serve the, basically the same number of students we talked about before. Basically, everybody, the instructional part's going to be a half day, which is consistent with the Early Childhood Special Education. It's consistent with what we've been doing. The beauty is we get to five days a week and we serve more students. So, that's kind of where we're at with that planning at this point in time. I think there's no doubt a full day opportunity adds more added value, but getting at least from two days a week to five days a week and then offering a wraparound that allows any family that really wants to, to participate in it with their work schedule, I think gives us a lot more opportunity. Any other questions I can answer on that or Dr. Volker anything you need to?
On the district contribution, this says it excludes facility and supply cost. Are those things that we're going to have to do anyway?
Yeah, right now, the facility itself, in terms of daily operation, we've already got in our budget, we've already been operating that facility. The renovation is in the capital improvement budget. That's pretty much one time or at least for the part of the building we're going to use now. If we end up needing to use the rest of the building, we may have to come back to that at a later point in time. And we, I do believe we have a line item for some additional supply costs startup wise when they relocate. All their stuff's going to come with them from Raymore, but there's bound to be a few pieces with a couple extra classrooms that we need to fill in. All right, I believe next up then is getting into some of the detail on our recommendations. So, I'm going to, okay, all right. Next up then is our best thoughts right now on some of the staffing considerations. So, you start out and to set a little more context with you, when we've talked to our administrators throughout the course of the year and the planning process, we've talked about the fact, just like we've visited with you, about the transition related planning and expenditures has been the highest priority just automatically. Okay, so the top things you see on these lists are the things that relate to the transition. And the first two items here are those FTEs about staffing adjustments that you see. So, the 1.53 certified staff, we've got an estimate for that. And the 3.375 classified staff, we've got an estimate for that. And again, Lisa's told me before we started that there's maybe another FTE out of that we might be able to adjust out. So, if anything, we're hoping that goes down, but by the same token, there could be enrollment bumps at a different grade level that cause it to go up in another way. So, one of the things that we didn't forget about, but we weren't thinking about is when we, when we were putting this together initially was those extra duty positions at South Middle School. So, we've got to replicate those programs. We won't need quite as many like assistant coaches for some of our activities at East Middle School. So, we've tried to account for where we could reduce some areas there with the idea that they can pick it up at South Middle School, but we think approximately $50,000 worth of extra duty positions that we would need to do to have comparable programs at the two schools.
I just have a random question on that. We are replicating all of the programs. They'll both be offered. There's some rumors and some fears that that will not take place. I just wanted to verify that we will have the same things offered at both schools.
We have not entertained the thought that anything would be different between the two schools.
Just wanted to verify.
We haven't even considered it.
I've had some people talk to me.
Oh, I did have one question come from that. Is there going to be a district difference between the East Middle School and the South Middle School in sports?
At the middle school level, there's no assignment for size. I do think there has been some planning to have East Middle School playing some larger middle schools than South Middle School. They will play each other and they will probably play some of the same schools, but South is enough smaller that if they can, they'll probably schedule some smaller schools. I don't know if they've been successful in that planning, but I know that's been part of what the discussion is.
That was a question I had brought.
Yeah, we're at 200 per grade level at South Middle, 270 roughly at East Middle School. So, you're not going to get the same number of kids out for any of the different events and activities. So, you do want to have some competitive balance, but that's a trick trying to get schedules aligned. But there are no classes in the middle school level.
Absolutely, thank you.
We do have a couple items on here that we proposed as maybe a zero net cost. With the process coordinator position, we're looking at some contracted services that we could reduce to try to offset that. And that's basically our caseloads continue to go up across the district. And the thought there is it's really needed at the high school to do some testing and help with some special education planning. You see the early learning center there. That's the 112,000 we just talked about with our additional contribution above the tuition. At the elementary level, we need some additional either PT or OT hours. I think it's PT. Okay, so there's some staffing adjustment plus and minus there, but it's a net increase of one day a week. So, for that, 6,600.
Do we, are we able to get any reimbursement on some of those PT hours and stuff to counter that?
We can. If they're providing services to students that are more than three times the average cost, we get a high need fund reimbursement from those. So, it depends on what other expenditures we have on that student, so.
For clarification, the cabinet recommendations, are these already assumptions built into the budget or are these going to be outside that we have to consider?
These are essentially what we build into this model within some rounding error. I mean, we're not, it's not a perfect science to try to get numbers to match up here, but we're pretty close to this in our budget plan.
The priority one.
The priority one level items are what we've pushed up and tried to account for them as best we can. Again, it's, it's not exact lineup, but it's close. And then the last item, well, the last two, the Panther Pride increasing some of their staff hours. Right now, if they average six hours a week, in theory, they're eligible for benefits. And we have a really tough time keeping our site coordinators below that six hour, 30 week, 30 hours a week threshold. Quite frankly, we're to the point now where we've got to do this, we think, but it wouldn't take much of an increase in their rates to offset that. When we took over the program, our fees were 75 bucks a week for before and after care. It's been below that since that time and somewhere between 70 and 72 dollars. It's kind of bounced up and down a little bit. It wouldn't need to go above that 75 dollars a week to cover the additional cost of that. So, it would be a modest increase. We really haven't had one. In fact, we're still lower than what we were the first year we took over the program. But it is an added cost to the overall program that, rather than, since it's an elective before and after school opportunity, we thought that would be one we could do an even recovery on. That would be our thought right now in terms of planning. And then the last one is trying to get some additional assistance at the elementary level for teacher collaboration time. We just spent a lot of time discussing changes to the middle school and high school schedule to try to accomplish that. The, in the past, the elementary might have had a little bit more, but now they don't really. And our thought there was to, by increasing lunch aid hours to help cover some recess time, we can free up some collaboration time. And it's relatively inexpensive to grab a couple hours a day at each school with some extra support. We will still need to keep at least a certified staff member or two on the playground. They, they're for overall supervision, but we think we can support that and free up some teacher time. I know the elementary principals spent some time today in our administrative meeting talking about how they would utilize that time. So, not a huge price figure. We wouldn't mind even doing more, but we were trying to keep this number in line with our assumptions. So, it does try to get that good balance across all our building levels. So, anything we need to add to that, Al?
No, that's correct. We're just looking at additional opportunity. We've worked at the high school level. We've worked at the middle level. We definitely want to look at the elementary level as well to talk about collaboration and support for those teachers.
I think that'd be very well received.
I think so too. Priority two, I don't necessarily want to go through all of those, but I will mention a few on that list. You know, some of these requests have come through different departments and buildings throughout the district. A couple that I'm going to mention to you that I, that we put on here that we may want to revisit later in the spring regardless of other decisions we make. The substitute pay increase and the green sheet pay revisions are things that we've been talking about through Team RAPAC for a couple of years now. Quite frankly, given where we're at with the cost of our insurance renewal and what we're going to have to decide there, there's no way in my mind those two will get prioritized above steps and insurance. So, but it's a decision we can make later in the budgeting process. So, it's possible that we would bring these back to you. If we identify in June that, okay, so the formula looks like we're going to get an extra $100,000, that might be a place where we want to do it because it benefits everybody, nearly everybody.
The green sheet pays?
That's a supplemental. Yeah, that's a good question. That's the supplemental pay for people who do things like after school detentions, scorekeepers, gatekeepers. We have hourly rates for those that haven't been touched for a long time. And Lisa's been working with Team RAPAC about making some revisions to that. So, we've got a dollar figure to put with that. Anything you want to add?
Green sheets also include curriculum writing, tutoring. So, those things are all part of green sheets as well.
Just from my own, what is a compliance officer for?
Well, that's a good question. We didn't spend a lot of time writing a job description, but we are to the position where there are enough formal investigations that have to happen through the course of normal activity with both staff and student issues that it might be a good idea at some point to have a designated person in the district that really just focuses on that. We knew going into it when it was put into the hopper, so to speak, that this wasn't going to be the year for it. So, we didn't go too far down the path of really fleshing that out in detail.
And how is our SRO status and everything now with the redistricting?
We will, yeah, the idea here is with the three SROs, we'll have one at the high school and one at each middle school. And the ones at the middle school can support the elementaries as well. It's the kind of the general concept, so.
Will we still have outside security at all or will we?
Yes, yeah, we would still use, the nighttime outside security is all we have at this point. Anybody else we have is our own employees at this point during the day.
And will we maintain those that we've got?
Yeah, I would think so. That's our plan.
So, I was just clarifying, you're in this, you're talking a legislative compliance officer, someone to keep us in check with all the legislation coming down and all the mandates?
Well, it's really more, for the most part, it's legislation that's already in place, requirements, legal requirements that are already in place. We, all of our administrators have training in school of law, but that's an ever evolving process. And a lot of these investigations that we're talking about are extremely time consuming and just really take away from day to day operations. You can go extended periods of time without having to do many of these, but it, when they hit, it's just all you can get done. So.
I know a lot of the colleges and universities have gone to this, having just one designated person. It's too much.
And again, we didn't get into all the job description of what it might look like. We're not there yet just because I didn't think we wanted to spend our time there right now.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting rid of our hours, not necessarily security, but the supervision people we've got. Yes, for that added support for the SROs and just.
And I would recommend that if we move to more compliance related issues, that we might actually look at just bringing in an attorney in house.
Staff attorney.
You know, because at some point with the crossover duties, that just makes sense.
There are many districts that have gone that route.
Let's talk about substitute pay for just a minute. This has been an ongoing issue that we address, it seems, monthly throughout the year. If we were to make this change, does that solve our issue? And I know you can't answer that definitively.
Sure.
But then the other question is, is that when we don't have enough substitutes to cover, does that impact student performance or, you know? So, the question becomes, is 50, $55,000, is that a small price to pay for what we get in return?
Sure. I wish I did have a crystal ball. I don't know how much money you would have to throw at substitute rate to really impact our fill.
That represents a dollar an hour, so it's not game changer money here.
But, but was it a hard?
That would take us up to 12 an hour?
Yeah, where would that put us relatively speaking?
I've got that here. It's, we currently pay 1150 per hour. This would be a dollar increase, which is 1250 per hour. So, we'd be going from $92 a day to approximately $100 a day. Just as a point of comparison, Belton is 1357 per hour. So, they are, even with this increase, would still be approximately a dollar, a little over a dollar higher than we are.
Lisa had it on there for $2 an hour and I made her reduce it, so.
And so, where would the? The figure have to be to make it a game changer situation?
I think the issue with substitutes is twofold. When we discussed that, you know, when the economy was pretty poor and people had lost their regular jobs, we had plenty of subs. I run a sub pool of almost 200 subs and we can generally on most days comfortably fill 50 positions. There's some days I get lucky and I get about 65 covered and there's other days that I don't have 38 covered. So, it's, you know, that's the nature of being a substitute teacher is you kind of make your own schedule and you get to work when you want to. So, we've worked across the board this year, whether it's curriculum writing or being pulled out for collaboration. If we have a sub for those and we don't have a sub for another classroom teacher that's ill, we've been doing a lot of shifting and sending teachers back to the classroom because of course, it's never as good as having your teacher in the classroom, no matter how good a substitute is. I would, I had asked originally, like Dr. Monce said, for $2 per hour just to keep us a little closer to Belton. Belton did go to Kelly Services this year, so they are outsourcing their substitutes. That's a very expensive proposition and I don't know if it's helping their fill rate. They just, I believe, started that like two or three weeks ago, so.
Do we have a particular grade level that runs harder to fill?
Not particularly.
I'm just curious.
We have some subs in our pool that only want to do high school. They won't step foot in an elementary. And I have some other subs that will only go to Timber Creek Elementary and won't go to any other school in the whole district. And they may only work on Mondays. So, it's, it's a very, it's very hit and miss sometimes.
It's the part day ones that we have the most trouble with. And then the late call-ins in the morning.
The part day, it's really, probably the most significant concern is when a teacher or a staff member wakes up in the morning and they're sick or their child is sick. Typically going into that, we are full for the day, but it's the morning ofs. But we've been doing a lot of shifting. We've been watching to see who's part day at one building and we call that building and say, hey, would you go ask them if they, when they're done there, if they could go to this building? So, we've been doing a lot of that as well. I mean, I think this will certainly help. There are a lot of things I do think that help your sub rates. Just being a warm, welcoming environment for your subs where teachers are supportive, I hear goes a long way. That's what I hear from our substitutes. And I will say, even though Belton is a little bit. And I will say, even though Belton is a little bit higher, substitutes enjoy coming to our district and they've said as such to me. A handful were not very excited about going to Kelly, so they've just migrated to us completely. I would like to see us keep pace though, um, and not fall further behind. We did not do, this is the same rate that we had last year.
At one of our meetings, um, when we were previously talking about this, and I don't remember all the ideas that we went through, but I think we talked about it pretty extensively. And I recall one was the concept of having some formal structure where those who return to us more frequently get paid more, uh, to help ease, to make it easier to, you know, get things filled every day because you have a group that's getting paid more and has more incentive to, to come. What does that look like? Is that more or less, I guess, is what I'm saying?
It would just kinda depend.
Or does it balance out depending on how you do it?
I think it would probably be pretty even. You know, we have some subs that work every single day of the week and we have some that might work once a month. So, it would likely balance out. I do think, again, I wish I had a crystal ball because I think the subs that want to work every day are working every day. And I don't know that.
So, two more dollars might not be the issue.
I don't know. I just don't wanna fall further behind.
So, that's the question before us is, because priority two isn't built into the budget, is that correct?
At this point, it's not.
All right, so, so the question before the board is, I mean, this has been an ongoing problem. I mean, almost every single discussion, every single month. So, is it worth a fifty-five thousand dollar investment to track the outcome of whether or not adding more money to it has an impact on whether or not we are able to fill our, our, or have a higher, uh, fill rate? I mean, to me, it's a small investment that if we tracked it over the course of the year, it's, it's worth to see if the, the little bit of investment has a greater impact. If it has no impact, so be it, then we know for sure.
I would agree that that's a big deal for us.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I would like to see it added to the budget just because this has been an ongoing issue. And again, it's, it's a small percentage to where if we track it, it could have a major impact in just education delivery to students.
I do think you eventually reach maybe a threshold that might tip someone over to becoming a sub, maybe in their one or two days a week that they are free. You know, we, we do have some substitutes sometimes that we just get in there like, hey, I'm a stay-at-home mom, but I wouldn't mind working a couple days a week and I have my sixty college hours. The other thing to consider is that getting your substitute certificate, it's, you pay your forty-five dollars for your background check and then you have to pay fifty dollars to get your certificate. So, just becoming a substitute's a hundred dollar investment for someone. But if the hourly rate, maybe that would be, and might, maybe it would get us more individuals who are willing to even work, work one or two more days a week that would help.
Have we ever considered reimbursing them for their background check?
Many years ago, all of any staff that did a background check got reimbursed through their first two paychecks. But we, we haven't done that in a while.
That's one, some districts have. If you work so many days, then we'll reimburse you after the fact. They still have to pay the upfront to get licensed.
And that might be something we consider too, just as an added bonus at some point implementing.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. I mean, as I'm hearing everyone to add that in, I guess the mechanics and details, perhaps you could bring us some recommendations later about.
I think it would be prudent at this point to go ahead and raise our hourly rate because otherwise we're falling further behind.
So, the fifty-five thousand is, you're talking about one dollar per hour?
Correct.
Which probably isn't gonna make a lot of difference. And so, my recommendation would be that we raise it enough so that it has a chance of succeeding and in improving our substitution. Instead of raising it a dollar per hour, which we know is probably not gonna make any difference. So, you know, why, why add fifty-five thousand dollars if it's not going to make? And, and truly, as a teacher, it's, it's not gonna make any difference. And so, we're looking at failure by not adding more money than the fifty-five thousand.
Does two dollars equal just two times that the way you've done it?
Yeah.
I mean, there's no special math there.
I would be supportive of that as well.
I would.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm hearing pretty clear consensus to build that into our planning and we can, we can do that.
Thank you very much.
It'll be well-received, no doubt.
Well, I have a question too. Do we pay, like, long-term staff or substitute, we pay them different anyway? Like, if you know you're going into maternity leave situation and?
Correct. That is a daily rate of a hundred and twenty dollars per day, which equates to fifteen dollars an hour. That, uh, it's, you know, assumes that they're gonna be doing less than planning and grading and calling parents and things like that. I will continue to watch that rate, but we are more competitive with our long-term rate than we have been with our other.
Well, and when you did that EMS study several years ago, this was one of the big things we were hit on, is that we didn't have very good pay for our substitutes.
In line with that, on the green sheet pay revisions, that's our tutors and some of the extra things. Do we have a hard time? Because we are on the lower end of salaries just in general. Does that make it even hard to get them to go above and beyond? And do we need, so I, I feel like we're all on the same page in terms of we really want to try and become more competitive in our fee schedules or pay schedules.
And what that thirty-five thousand would do is, right now, we have a set hourly rate for tutoring. It's, it's twenty dollars. And all of our other fee, um, rates for like ticket-taking and all the other things we do have been very random and it's per game or per event. The assumption for this thirty-five thousand dollars is that we would raise anything that's instructionally driven to twenty dollars per hour. So, that would be your curriculum work, um, BLT tutoring, things like that. Our homebound is already there. And then it would make the, anything that's not related to the professional duties such as that would be sixteen dollars per hour across the board for certified staff. Our support staff get their normal hourly rate. And then, of course, if they hit forty hours, then that bumps them into overtime for, um, such things.
I was just wondering if, um, is that gonna really have a benefit not only to our teachers but to our students as well?
I would say this is a little different than the subs in that as, as far as I'm understanding and Dr. Volker or Lisa can correct me if I'm wrong, is that I think we are able to get those needs filled on a regular basis. We have a lot of our staff members that just, they'll, they'll say yes anytime they get the chance to earn that extra twenty bucks or whatever it might be for a duty. So, my understanding is they, they pretty well get filled all the time. I, I do think it would be something that we could bring back later in the process and say, okay, yeah, we can make this work as well.
Yeah, I'd like to start.
Comparing it, comparing to subpay, I would say the subpay is.
I would agree.
Priority-wise, probably a higher issue for us right now.
Well, and for me, it, there's, there were two things that are on the, the priority two that are, were near and dear to me. Sub was one because that was an ongoing issue. The other is the strings instructor. I mean, I've made no bones of how I feel about that. I, I think that we should add that. Um, I would ask the board, uh, to consider that for the budget process.
I would rather do the double on the substitute and then do the strings next year, once we've gotten into the new system.
All right, so, which, now let's go back to our original, one of the, the points that I made originally. If we're at nineteen percent and the threshold that we need to maintain is the fifteen percent, so that, that margin in between equates to what dollar figure?
Yeah, but these are ongoing, I mean.
No, I, I, and I, I, I acknowledge that and I'm aware of that. There are some things that it's worth the ROI.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm not comfortable pulling out of something that's gonna be an ongoing thing, pulling it out of reserves to pay for it. I'm fine pulling out of reserves. I'm not opposed to dipping down our reserves, but for me, it needs to be a one-time thing, not an ongoing thing.
Right, but keep in mind, we're, we're dipping into reserves because of one-time cost. Whereas, we, we, we might be able to budget more of the, the ongoing things next year outside of those one-time expenses.
We may or may not, depending on how things play out with it.
So, the question is, is what kind of return do we get on what we're gonna do? I mean, to me, this is an investment in kids.
I'd rather not start something this year that we may have to have cuts next year.
Our survey inter, our survey feedback was that there is some interest, uh, in strings. You know, we did a wide range of kids. But it, it's not numerically, it's not the, uh, it's not the interest that a, the band theater and mute, and choir have at this point. You know, you had mentioned talking about maybe starting a club and see if we can build that interest. That might be another way to ease into it either next year or the, the year after. Part of what plays into this is how many kids do we really think will schedule into that FTE? As we grow, we'll, we'll have more, more kids wanting to enroll in all of our various programs. Right now, and our, our thought and all of our redevelopment of all the schedules, middle school and high school in particular, we were, we're a little concerned that we would get enough critical mass to get the enrollments we would need to justify a full FTE. That's, that was part of our thinking right now is why we kept it down here. My preference is to wait another year, but, uh, whatever the board was really interested in, we're willing to, to put in front of you.
Well, and some other things I think we need to think about. You know, we're getting ready to go into our strategic planning process again. And I think that's a good time to listen to what our patrons are saying in all areas of things that we need to be doing. I would love to have a strings program myself. But I, I think when we get to picking and choosing, I would like to see everything that people would like, you know, in the strategic planning process and then see where that falls relative to everything else. Right now, we've just kinda picked one thing, but what about the twenty other things that are gonna come out of that process? And then the other thing I'm looking at, um, thank you for including the scorecards. Um, I had asked to have those in here for this because when you flip through our scorecards, and that's how we're measuring our success against our strategic plan, which is what our community, you know, pointed towards when we did that, you know, a few years ago. I just went through and kinda looked at things that were, say, below a five, like add a five or below a five overall. And so, um, of course, you know, workforce satisfaction, so we're trying to address salaries. Some of the others, I recall, um, special education is one. And I remember thinking that at the program review, you know, do we really need some resources in special education? Cause it's like a four-point-seven. Um, some of the other areas included, um, professional development was right at a five. We're throwing a lot of things at our staff, you know, do we need to put more resources to that? Our early learning program at a three-point-eight, but clearly we're putting resources to that. So, we've, we've addressed that. Parents as teachers came in at a four-point-five. That was something that I know our community was interested in. So, I think we have a lot of options for if we were going to make more investments to make them worthwhile. And I would like to see us look to the strategic planning process to make that decision. Again, love strings, you know, my daughters would probably do it, but I think it's not fair to just pick one thing to look at, um, at a time. That would be my thought.
And I would agree, it was a great program. Mine was one of the ones that got cut from it several years ago. So, I completely get that, you know, it's a great program, but, you know, we got Project Lead the Way and a lot of these other programs that we're really getting ramped up too at the same time.
And, and, and that, that I would suggest that's ultimately why projects and programs need champions behind them. Somebody who will drive the issue, drive the conversation, and that's how things get considered. Uh, just like band and choir, the reason why they have a high acknowledgement rate on a survey is because historically we've had them forever. People are very comfortable with those programs. So, naturally, they will gravitate to something that they know. Which is why, you know, naturally, I expected to see a low survey result when we introduced a strings program. To me, I think it, uh, strings programs have demonstrated where they have, uh, a huge impact on student performance uh, and on the learning environment in general. I would ask that the board consider it, but I will abide by the board's decision.
Oh, I think I like the, the strategic plan process idea of looking at what, what does our community want for new programs?
I was gonna say, I, I, for me, this is not a do we consider it or not consider it? It's a deferment to consider it among everything, specifically listening to the responses of our community as a whole and then making a full decision as we're moving forward with our strategic plan.
I, I think what I'm hearing is a pretty good consensus that we know we wanna have this program at some point in time. It's just a matter of when and how we get to that point, so.
So, so I guess.
So, it's not a no to the strings program. I love strings myself.
Then I guess I, I'm confused then because if it's a program that we want to embrace and we want to incorporate, that eventually we're going to add it into our budget so it becomes a non-issue. I mean, it's an issue this year because we have some one-time costs. But if we're gonna add it next year, then the ongoing cost isn't a factor if we're going to address it anyway.
Well, we're saying the way knowledge next year.
I, I think it's more a matter of prioritizing and when we're able to do it. So, when we look at everything together, we might find out strings is first. We might find out strings is tenth. It will impact which year we do it and how we do it, um, based on what we hear from our, from our community, um, as a whole.
The other thing we didn't try to quantify is, um, you know, with typically with our, with our band program, and I think strings would probably fall in the same regard. There are some specialty instruments that the district would ultimately own and need to buy. And we didn't try to quantify that in this. So, I, this is one of those areas where, uh, what we put for just the staff FTE would need to be supplemented with some other things as well. We didn't go very far down that road. I, I, I appreciate the fact that once we, once we, once we go to that point, it will be built into our budget moving forward. I think it's a, a pretty big dollar figure when you put the pieces with it to do this year. So, I, 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 I get it, I understand it. I just, I, I'd like to wait on that one.
My, my other concern, and this isn't against strings, it's just in general per se. Because our, a lot of these extra programs, um, are becoming so competitive, you, you really are only gonna be able to do one. I mean, and that's trickling down into our middle schools. Cause, because if we make, I think we're making band and everyday class, which means that it takes away the opportunity to do some of the other extracurricular options. And so, if we continue to move in that direction, we really are kind of pigeonholing them. And so, if they're competing between the two, um, let's say that they want to do band and strings, they really wouldn't be able to do that. So, that might be moving forward, gathering information of if you had to pick between these three, which one would you choose? Because it doesn't look like being able to do both is going to be an option moving forward.
Yeah, that's the hard part with us to try to plan around is the fact that if, you know, a certain number of students are drawn to strings, are they coming from band and choir? Or are they coming from some other elective option?
Cause if they're forced to choose.
Right.
I don't, and I'm not saying that against strings. I just know that's where we're headed. We would need to know that's what they wanted.
And just to, just from a little bit of history, we did add a fourth, uh, band instructor two years ago, I believe. Which was a, you know, we've made an extra investment in that program overall district-wide, uh, just in the near past. And what, i- if, if the students were all gonna come from the band program, in theory, that might be just a shift in assignments within our instructors, assuming you had somebody qualified to be able to teach it. So, that might be something we're looking at too in the future.
So, so just so we can put it in perspective, for every one percent of budget reserve, what dollar amount does that equate to?
One percent of our operating budget would be around six hundred thousand dollars.
All right, so, in order to drop our reserves one percent.
It works on both sides of the equation, revenue expenditure, so it's.
We'd have to add everything that's on our priority list just to drop our, our reserves down one percent.
But it would go down every year one percent because we don't have it in the operating.
Well, it, it goes down, it goes down one percent this year because our one-time costs are greater. Next year, it might not affect it that much.
I just, I, I, I'm not an accountant, but that doesn't seem like a wise budgetary decision. I mean, I know my husband would not allow me to do that, to incur an onco, an ongoing loan if we, that we take the money out of savings to cover it.
But we take it out this year, not necessarily next year.
But if we don't know, if we don't have a plan to have income to cover it moving forward, if we're gambling on that, that, that doesn't seem to be a way. But maybe, um, other people have a higher risk. But, but I, but we're dealing with patrons' money and I, I wanna be fiscally responsible. And, I mean, I, I recognize what you're trying to say. But if we're gonna dip into, so I have no problems dipping into that. You're gonna have a hard time convincing me of dipping into that for an ongoing cost.
And that's fine.
And that's the argument there.
And I acknowledge that.
Yeah.
You know, to me, an investment in children is fiscally responsible. So, for me, I'm willing to make that investment.
And that's not really a fair statement. I think we all think investments in children is important. I would look at the information in front of us and say we need another special education teacher and we need another. I think there are a lot of ways we could spend that fifty-five thousand dollars. And I'm not comfortable looking at the ten other options that I came up with off the top of my head as ways to spend it and prioritizing strings over that. I would like to look at the whole context and involve our whole community through the strategic planning process to say, all right, what's important to you? We know we have twenty people that think strings is important or thirty or fifty. You know, do we have people that, you know, think special education is important or the professional development is important or all of those? I just don't like making the decision one at a time to continue to incur recurring expenses without putting it all into perspective at the same time.
Cause we wanna make sure.
So, again, I, I, I think it's a matter, I think I'm hearing the consensus here of waiting and, um, and factoring it in and then.
Well, until you don't wanna just throw a program out there and start it next year and say, here, we have it. I mean, this is March. We need to have, I think, another year to really buy the instruments, look into maybe buying used instruments. I'm not against it. I mean, I was in band since sixth grade and loved it.
I don't think anyone here is against strings.
Yeah.
That is a fair point. It is kinda late in the cycle to get a, a program like that up off the ground. So, I, it wouldn't be too late if we wanna talk about it later in the process to talk about starting some type of club next year or something that would be a lower entry point to try to build into.
But if, but if we push it off to this. But if, but if we push it off to this point next year, it's always going to be too late to factor that in.
Though, we don't want to just throw it out there, be in March and say.
No, you're right, we would need to start sooner, not now, to really talk about implementing.
And ultimately, I would challenge the assertion that, you know, our community votes for us to be that voice and to represent them.
But that's also why we do surveys.
Well, I understand, but that's why people vote for us, and that's the position and responsibility that we have is that our patrons of the district voted for us to make these decisions on their behalf. I mean, that's what the purpose of this board is. So, anytime that we always just kick it to committee, you know, in my opinion, we are derelict in our duties because we were charged with making those decisions. And if we always defer to committee every single time, something, you know, comes up that might be a little tense, again, to me, that's irresponsible.
I don't think anyone's saying to kick it to committee. I think we're listening to the survey.
When you look at special ed, I mean, like she said, we could, you know, look at that number and say, okay, we definitely need somebody there. We're a one. So, to pick and choose, that's part of our.
Is it on the priority list?
And as far as the committee, we're talking about the strategic planning process where we're engaging our community, not kicking it to a committee, much like we did with the boundary process and the construction prog, you know, process. That was involving our community in a series of, what, 30, 20, I don't know how many meetings where we invited the community to provide input, and it's time for us to update the strategic plan and go through that process. So, I don't call that a committee, I call that community involvement and soliciting the feedback of our patrons that we're here representing. So, I think that's the next step.
Yeah, and just the overall, on terms of what's on the list, our, our own staff knew what we were looking at this year. And so, the number of requests were relatively small in, in total. There might be, if we opened it up and said, give us everything you really have an interest in.
There might be 20 more.
It might be a much longer list.
You know, I'm talking about Champions Barb has been a champion for reading interventionists for three years. So, everybody's got their thing that they like to encourage.
Well, I, I'll just reiterate, I, I know I've never once had kicked it to committee. I know I've given you my opinion, and I was elected to give my opinion. And I recognize that you don't have to accept that, but that's why I was elected, and I've given you my opinion, not off of a committee. So, again, not against strings. I, I want to be wise with the patrons' money, and I want to make sure that we're not just meeting certain niches. I know for a fact with our special education, they really could use a lot of help with that. I know our counseling departments, I mean, mental health issues are at an all-time high. Suicide rates are at an all-time high, and the lives of children are more important to me than them learning strings. So, there are so many needs out there, and that's why I want to consider that in the context of all of the needs, not just one that's being presented before us.
And that's fair. So, are we going to talk about those other things that you mentioned tonight?
Not tonight, but I think it's important.
This is the budget process. This is when we actually plan to meet those needs. I mean, that's when we should be doing this.
But it's also not time in the process of enrollment to decide new classes for next year.
Well, I think at this point, we're in a position where with the resources that we have, we are doing, we're looking at the budget, which is showing that we're doing what we can with the current resources. And I think that's why the strategic planning process is a good thing, so that we can ask our community to prioritize how we're spending, so that we can do that. So, I, you know, things do take time. This is what we can do this year, and when we get, next year, we'll be starting the strategic planning process here, what, within a few months, really?
By fall, yeah. Our work by June.
Right.
And I'll just make one, one comment, and then, then I'm done, and we can move on. You know, if there are needs that need to be met in this district, and we have the funds available that do not put us in a danger range, that put us in a safe range, if we dip into reserves to meet a need that needs to be filled, I believe we have the responsibility to do it. To leave money in a savings account when there are needs of our students that need to be met, to me, is irresponsible. And I will fight against that every single time. Now, that's just me, and, and I acknowledge that, that others might not have that same passion, and, and that's fine. I'm okay with that, so we can move on.
I just want to make one comment in response to that. I don't disagree with that, but for me, it has to be a one-time need, not an ongoing.
Okay, and I think we're repeating things now, so let's move on.
Can I summarize just a little bit here? Michelle, if you'll scroll back to the top of the page, I just wanted to clarify that is there anything on this Priority One list that we have any questions or concerns about? Because if not, I think we're to the point where Lisa's ready to bring the staffing request to you for next week's meeting, so that we can see, get around to hiring some of these positions throughout the course of the spring.
Is the extension of lunch aids, is that longer lunch periods with having more kids in the buildings, or is that adding people?
That's taking the people we have and increasing their day so they can help with playground supervision, so.
And that was the thing that was increasing collaboration time?
That's correct. Free up teacher time for other, other work.
And we have enough at the high school with them all being in one area now to just move it?
Yeah, yeah, I think. So, if there's no questions on the Priority One list, that doesn't mean we can't come back and revisit these. We will build in, based on your conversation, the subpay increase into our planning purposes right now. And again, that's, just to give you as a hypothetical example, there's no, nothing that says we would have to continue that beyond next year. We could change that rate any given year without, without, well, there would be a potential impact. I wouldn't say without impact, I would just say that.
But it's not contractual.
It's not, it's not something built into a salary schedule. So, you could expect to see that particular list. And again, it may change a little bit between now and next week, but hopefully, in, in a negative direction, not a positive direction, right? So, we'll, we'll see how that goes. So, that's the staffing side of it. That is out of our operating budget roughly 75% when you take our existing staff plus any new staff. So, that's the big part of our, our budget. The other side of the budget is the supplies and purchase services, which is the next chart. If, Michelle, you want to get that opened, and we can make this one quite a bit quicker. That 4% increase in supplies and purchase service I mentioned was approximately $600,000 or a little more than that. So, we went to work on prioritizing what we thought we would need to do in that range. And about half of this is what I would consider one-time expenditures versus half being things that would be more likely to be built into our budget. So, we've got funds set aside for the high school and the South Middle School for startup things. And at the high school level, we're talking about some classroom furniture, we're talking about potentially some equipment, things like in our classrooms at the high school, we're doing much more in putting TVs up instead of projectors. And in many cases, they're actually cheaper, not, depending on how big the TV is. So, some of those kinds of things fall under that, but classroom furniture and some of the other things with opening that large addition. Likewise with South Middle School, we know they're going to need uniforms for their activities. We know they're going to need some band instruments, they're going to need some other things. So, we, we plugged an amount in there, and we tried to be reasonable and judicious with that. They could easily be twice as high, or you could say they could be almost nothing, and neither one would be very practical. So, we've tried to pick what we think is.
And none of this was to be budgeted out of our bond?
No, no. Our bond issue is capital improvements, and these are supply purchase services.
And these are the things that back on some other page are the 4% supply line item increase.
Right.
And so, they're one-time, so to speak, but they're not capital, so they're coming out of supplies.
That's correct.
And then in your three-year look ahead from that, that line goes back down to like 0%, 2%.
Right, so, the way this plays out, if there's $600,000 roughly on this list, the next year, $300,000 would go away of the one-time, but then we might need it for inflation in other areas. So, that's why it would be a net zero increase the second year. We would still have a $300,000 increase, but the one-time money, it's offset by the one-time money that went away, if you will. So, that's kind of the concept here. Project Lead the Way, that's a program we want to continue to expand, and we've written grants to supply a lot of the equipment and supplies that we need for that program. But there probably will be a net increase in terms of district money going into those grants, in terms of match. Our tech, technology integration, we built a five-year plan that had $100,000 roughly a year going into that. So, we've got an accounting of that. We've talked about math, resource adoption is our next significant adoption. Dr. Volker's working really hard to do that in a phase-in process. This is an area we're going to need to continue expanding because we've, we've, for lack of a better term, we've kind of gotten behind on our resource adoptions.
How many-year process does that look like?
Oh, it takes several. I mean, it, we need to probably add $100,000 to it every year for a while, like we're talking about technology, to kind of get caught up realistically. The Early Learning Center, you know, we've got $10,000. Again, we've got a couple extra classrooms we'd have to outfit, but a lot of the stuff's going to be moving from Raymore. Our, our high school Project Lead the Way student group is a TSA. They need funds to go do their competition. So, we've found a way to cover it this year, but we need to build it into, into their budget. And then our, our transportation contract has a 3% escalator clause in it, so we've got to account for that. And then, with the addition of Southland Caps as a vocational option, or basically internship-type programs, we've got a net increase there that we need to account for in tuition, so.
Is it a hindrance to our program or the students when we have to phase in resource adoptions like that over years?
That's a matter of opinion. There are a lot of resources that we utilize that aren't purchased resources. They're existing resources that, you know, a lot of the math resources can be used for an extended period of time. So, the answer is probably yes. If we had the very best, latest, and greatest, we might see an improvement in that. But quite frankly, it's the instructional side of it that has to go with it and the PD that goes with it. So, sometimes when we do our phase-ins, it's so we can put the PD in place at the same timeline. I think easily, our academic services department would say, we can add to that if we want to, and, and we would certainly put it to good use. We were just trying to come up with a scenario that would accomplish all the other things we're trying to do for next year as well. So, I, I know that's a roundabout way of answering that, but that's an area.
I forgot what the question was.
Yeah, that is certainly an area you could.
Thank you.
Will, will it affect student achievement in a negative way by facing it in over several years?
I wouldn't say in a negative way, it just may not grow as fast as we'd like. I mean, that, that's, that's a relative term, I don't, yeah.
So, I noticed in, in the document that's being sent in to, for the, for the award, that 40% of our free and reduced students are not proficient in math. 40%. So, what, what are we doing in this, in this area of, of supplies and materials and so forth that, that's going to help that?
Well, I wouldn't suggest that there's anything in there other than what math resources we do by this coming, for this coming year. I will say that our interventions that we built into our scheduling and our staffing use will support that. The fact that we built in intervention time into our middle school and high school schedules, that's going to help that. So, it's really more of a time allocation than it is a resource allocation.
And who's doing the intervention? In the middle school, who will be doing the intervention in the middle?
All of our staff will be involved in that.
Certified teachers.
Okay, I, I, as a patron-to-be and am now, I sincerely hope that we see some, some, some improvement in that, and I will be watching.
Absolutely.
Well, and I know with a child in that needs the intervention, they don't get enough time. So, to me, as a parent, I would rather see that built into the schedule because they do get pulled from class, which interrupts their learning there because then they miss out on that classroom learning. They do try to pull them out when it's not like significant learning, but they still not missing out on that. And then the teacher has to take the time, or the parent, and try to teach that to their kids so they're ready for their test. And we, as parents, at least me, in some areas, you can't teach as well as the teacher who's certified and skilled in that area to teach it. So, I am glad that we have that even at the middle school. And hopefully, we can get that trickle down to the elementary school, so those kids aren't pulled out.
So, would it aid us to, you know, talking about one-time expenditures, to add some to the math resource adoption this year to help with the new intervention times that they're going to have next year? And therefore, going forward?
We would, we would need to evaluate where we would want to use that. Intervention is student-by-student specific. So, to say a blanket expenditure in one subject area or another would, would get this, the result we want, I think it's really more about targeting what we need. We can do a little more analysis on that, maybe come up with some other ideas. And it's, you know, again, it's, it's not necessarily recurring, so we do have a little more flexibility there. I want to, let's, let's kind of wait and see where we come up with our math adoption, what it really costs, and what the phase-in might look like. And, and then we can decide at that point if we want to beef that up later in the process.
And Dr. Monsis made a good point on that regarding the professional development that's required with that. That's very important to consider in looking at this. So, we can continue to explore that as an academic services group and come back and say, this is a rollout plan that we think is both fiscally responsible, but has the professional development components built in that we think will make that difference that Ms. Boucher was talking about and that we all want to see.
Yeah, we said we wouldn't want to dump more on our teachers that they're not ready for.
Right. Where a lot of changes, a lot of things that we're doing, especially at the elementary level next year. So, we've talked about really looking at this as, next year, coming back and might have a different number for you for the elementary level, so we can do the correct amount of professional development and the resource adoption. We can maybe do a, a secondary adoption a little bit sooner.
And I'm sorry if this has been answered before. What is our markers or benchmarks going to be to know if these new intervention times are truly being effective for the teachers and the students?
Go ahead, Al.
Well, we listed, when we came back last month, we, we looked at the different areas that we want to look at. We want to look at all the academic measures, our NWA, our end-of-the-year summative assessments, but we also want to look at attendance, we want to look at discipline, all those different things. Hopefully, our students, yeah, our soft skills. When students feel comfortable, when they feel like they are being successful at school, they're more likely to want to attend. They're more likely to be engaged in class. So, we want to look at all of those measures.
I don't know if this is a question or just, well, actually, I guess it is. Speaking of new things for teachers, would it be possible to, at our next meeting, our next work session, to have a list of the new things being put on teachers next year? You know, we're, we're going to have a math adoption, we're going, you know, what, what are the big, maybe not little tiny things, but the big things that are new, that are going to require professional development? You know, where we're asking them to do something different? I think it's important to keep track of those so that we each year can look at that list and see what it looks like and, and keep track of those things and how successfully we're providing the resources to make sure that they're prudent or effective.
Yeah, one thing I would add about the whole curriculum development and resource adoption, that's ongoing. I mean, that's something that our staff expect to do on a semi-regular basis as we move forward, and they're constantly rewriting, reviewing their curriculum, looking at their assessment results and moving it on.
And sometimes they're probably happy to have it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I didn't want to insinuate otherwise.
No, no, I.
No, and I, right, and I wasn't picking on math. But just an effort to keep track of what we're putting on people.
Yeah. So, this is, kind of gives you an idea of the, the ticket items, the bigger ticket items that would go into a roughly $600,000 increase, and again, with about nearly half of it being more of the one-time variety of getting the transition finalized and getting the schools opened in their new configuration, if you will.
Just curious why we would need storage area in the cafeteria hallway for the students, since we're going to have less kids?
That's an area where, right now, there's a, there's a whole section of the hallway, actually, I've got pictures of this, where the kids just throw their coats and their backpacks and everything down in the hallway. And so, it, it creates, you know, just issues with being able to find your stuff, safety of your belongings. You know, so, that's why they're asking for that.
Wait, what, I'm, I, what?
It was in the priority.
It was in the priority too.
Right here. East Middle School.
Is that something we need to move up then?
Actually, we think we've got an idea to make it within this year's budget to resolve it. So, if we can accomplish it this year with existing funds, it saves us from having to add it for next year.
Thank you.
That's our goal there.
Okay, and so, just to clarify, so the $641,000, okay, so that's in supplies, but even though that's operating, it won't be recurring. But that is part of, as we're reducing our reserve, I mean, that is part of what's reducing our current year reserves.
About half of it would be things that I would consider one-time. And the other half would be more that would be built in. I don't expect our transportation contract to get cheaper, it just gets more and more expensive, so.
And then when I flip back to look at that page, you know, we've been talking a lot about the reserves and, you know, making use of the money that we have, we've actually, in the. We've actually in the past three years dropped our reserves from 26% to 19%. So, we have been spending pretty, well, maybe not feverishly, hopefully prudently and, and to make that.
And the 19% is, is after the big investment for next year. So, that's, that's what the big capital improvement investment for next year.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions on this area?
We also have in the, in the document our, our draft from Team Ray Peck, and that's an ongoing monthly meeting process with our staff representatives from across the district, all departments and buildings. And, and they start brainstorming earlier in the year and as we get to this point in the year, we're starting to narrow in. We have a board member representatives on that committee. I believe it's Maria and Susan. And so, they, they kind of can observe some of this. Quite frankly, we're, the last time we met in February, we really didn't have the full picture of the insurance that we're going to have next week when we meet. So, they'll be looking at some real numbers with real plans. The placeholder amount for 20% increase was around $840,000. If you just look at those first two items, which are basically steps and insurance, if we made no plan changes, that 840 number would be probably 900 or more. Okay, so roughly a million and then the steps alone are 685 roughly. Doing those with no changes would put us much lower in where we're at in terms of projected reserves. What I'm suggesting to you tonight is with this analysis, we could probably go up to the neighborhood of 1.3 million in investment with our current staff in terms of salary benefits in total and still give us an opportunity to accomplish steps and a 15%, absorbing a 15% increase on our insurance. That's what I've kind of built into this model. It would take about 1.3 million to do that. And just to give you a little context, last year, Team Ray Peck, their, their salary benefit pot that we worked within was a, ended up being a million dollars. So, we're actually talking about doing more for next year because of this big insurance increase. Last year, our insurance number was zero, so we could put all of that into salary. This year, we don't have that option, quite frankly. So, we kind of focused our planning on trying to get to a number that would still keep a pretty decent district fully paid plan, wouldn't be the same one that people are necessarily used to now, but they would have an option to buy up to those plans or something very similar to it. So, really, there will be other items on the list. Obviously, we've still got a half step that we haven't done as far as recovery step for our certified staff that we definitely want to get done, but that's obviously a recurring expense. And I, I do think in any other year that we weren't looking at a big insurance increase, that would definitely be a priority along with some of the other things here, so.
So, just to clarify for me, because I make sure understood. So, in the proposed budget, you've put in here the insurance and the one step.
The insurance of the 15% assumption, not the 20% you see on this list.
So, are we looking at making a high deductible plan as our base that's, that's covered? Is that one of the options that?
That would be one of the options to get.
Now, if we do that, are we also looking at making a contribution to an HSA?
That's a, that's a decision we would have to make. To get to 15%, we probably wouldn't be at that point. They are talking about some transition benefits for people that are moving that might make this transition softer than it would be otherwise, but that's a lot of technical insurance stuff that I don't, you know.
So, we'll see that at the next, when will we see those options? I'm sorry.
Well, the, the likeliest scenario that we can have something to you is that March 30 special meeting. We might want to talk about insurance at that time.
And if, if we make that choice to go to that transition, I would suggest that we offer examples. You know, for example, my, my wife and my kids are on the school's plan and I forget which plan they have. If we would have been on the high deductible plan, when my daughter had surgery last year, it would have capped our out-of-pocket maximum at 2,500. The plan that she chose, which is a higher plan, our out-of-pocket was 4,000. So, by going with the high deductible plan, it would have actually saved us, would have saved us monthly as well as saving us anytime that we used it. And I don't think people necessarily make those connections, so we need to illustrate that.
No doubt. There, there's a clear trade-off. The high deductible plans have more out-of-pocket upfront, but over the course of a year, if you have a lot of things happen, you're probably going to pay more out-of-pocket on the other plans, so.
What's scariest, I think, for our staff is that the high deductible is a big outlay all at once, or it could be. And we've got some ideas for how to help them with that. We also are going to be working with one-on-one benefits counselors as we go through the enrollment process this year, so they'll be able to thoroughly explain the different plans and walk them through what might be best for them.
And that's why if, if we could see maybe a proposal with an HSA, you know, kick in, I, I don't know the dollar amount. I'll leave that to you to kind of look at, because then that also offsets that upfront cost and the perception of it changes for the employee.
Right. Right now, as it is with the high deductible plan, if you choose that option, there is a small amount being dropped in or could be if you chose to do that. We only have about 40 employees that are even on the high deductible plan at this point in time. So, there's, regardless of what we do, in, in terms of any changes, there's an education component that's going to have to come with it. And so, Lisa's already planning around that, so. So, kind of wrapping the, the multi-year planning tool with this, what we're suggesting to you is that we talk to Team Ray Peck about working within a 1.3 million dollar parameter. That gives us a chance to do steps and absorb at least a, a significant portion of the insurance increase and, and talk to them in terms of planning around that. The choices then for them will come into what, what insurance package makes the most sense for us in terms of what, how we want to package that together. My philosophy is, my, my goal is to never have to freeze salary schedules again if we can avoid it. I'm willing to make cuts if I have to in order to not do that for our staff because I know how hard it's been to recover that over the last three or four years. And we're getting close, but we're, we're another year away probably of having a better insurance renewal to get that final half step taken care of, I think. That's not to say that they could look at all the plan options insurance-wise and take one that's 10 or 12% increase in trying to get some of the other salary opportunities. So, that's always something we could discuss with them and, and if that's the way they want to go, I'm, I'm willing to have that conversation as well.
And we will take the substitute number three off there so that they know that that doesn't have to be.
We'll, we'll let them know that that's, that's going to be addressed one way or the other. So, they, it, this year, because of the insurance piece, our focus is going to be on insurance and what that impacts overall. But I wanted to put at least something in front of you that we could do something with insurance and steps at the same time, so.
Well, and, and like I said earlier, I'd really like to see us explore some other alternatives for insurance.
Right.
Because if there's negotiating room between Blue Cross, Blue Shield and, and CBIZ, if they know we're looking at a different plan and we're going to cut them completely out, there might be a little bit more wiggle room that they could kick us back some.
I think, I think next year, being a normal bid year, is our perfect opportunity to explore everything. And that's, at, at that point in time, you know, I think finding options that have a better long-term trend are, is the right time to do that. And I, I think that'll be a longer process next year that we need to have. Typically, in a bid year, we have a committee that works all through the course of the year on that, so.
Something a little further down on the list. Paid BIST training for in-house for new teachers. Do we not give our new teachers BIST training?
We provide it. We don't necessarily pay them extra for the time. I don't, I believe is what the, the idea there was.
If they do the training in the summer, they do get paid for a daily stipend for that. I believe this recommendation was to add on to the new teacher days at the beginning of the year and do that training in-house.
Lisa, do you know how long it's been since we, since we've increased the green sheet compensation? It's been a while, hasn't it?
This is my sixth year in this position and we've made a few minor tweaks here and there, but nothing, nothing significant. So, I'd say we're probably at that where we were a couple of years ago with extra duty stipends. I think it had been 10, 12 years since those had been looked at, so probably pretty similar.
How many people does it really impact? Because your, your, your classified staff, let me make sure I get this right.
Support.
Your, our support staff, they're, they're not factored in this because they're compensated differently because they get paid.
That is correct. They get their hourly rate.
So, exactly how many people are impacted by increasing the green sheet?
Well, it would be all of our staff that work on curriculum. So, you're talking about the summer curriculum camps, the after-school. It'd be quite a few. That's, that's the most significant number of that dollar amount is the curriculum work they're doing.
So, we, we have, how many employees in the district?
About 847.
And this impacts what percentage?
Well, our certified staff is about 437 of that or so. I'd say, I don't know how many typically sit on curriculum.
Well, potentially they're impacted by green sheet certified staff. 150, you know, at some point in time with curriculum and the different things that we do.
And it could impact anyone who wanted to do some of those extra duties and do the tutoring.
From a practical standpoint, though, I would say it's less than half, but maybe a third or more would be doing something in this.
But if, if we increase it, there's no, there's no increased impact, there's no decreased impact by not doing it because we don't have a problem filling the positions. It's a zero-sum game.
My only thing I would add on to that is these are our staff that are most vested in our community and in our school. And I would like to reward them, if we can, for going above and beyond. So, not that if they don't do it, they're not invested, but these are the people who are really investing time and effort into our district and into our community. And those are the kind of teachers and the kids, I mean, relationship development, all of those things. So, I'm not saying we have to do it, but to me, that's a good return on that investment.
I've been on Team Ray Peck for five years and this is always high on the priority list. It always gets skipped, but it's always there.
And it's not just an issue of how much they get paid for these duties. It's also some of the equity between, you know, doing this task versus this task, this duty versus that duty. And, and we can do some evening up in there. And that, that feels like a, it feels like a perk to especially the certified staff.
I would like to see us consider just adding that in if we can.
Yep. Here's, here's my suggestion on that. Any of the things that show up on this list, we'll take the sub-paid deal off for a year and say, we're going to address that one way or the other. I would suggest we have our focus on the insurance and then we ask Team Ray Peck, if there's any additional money, where would you want to see it among what's left after this? So, and if that's the one that comes up as the number one thing, we bring that back to you. It might be something else on this list. I'm not sure. And that's a good place to get their input, so if there's more funds available and we get to June, we can make that decision at that time, so.
That sounds good.
Is that fair enough?
Yep.
Are you ready for the next page?
All the rest of the pages, I believe, here are what I consider supplementary supporting documents. Cindy's going to walk through them just quickly to tell you what they are and we'll pause just for a second to see if you have any questions about it. I know we're getting deep into this conversation.
So, if not fast, she's going to move on.
Right. Okay. So, on page 15, we have our debt service fund payments. This is a schedule you've seen before and this isn't one where we have any new decisions to make for the budget. It's just been updated for the, the issuance of the new bonds.
The refunding we just did.
The refunding that we just did, right. Page 16 is the same sort of information on our capital leases. If you remember from prior years, these lease payments are, are made out of our Fund 40, Capital Projects Fund. Page 17 begins some information about our, our technology department.
It's our five-year tech plan.
And our five-year tech plan, right.
And you've seen this several times.
This is the same thing that you saw, actually, a lot of this is the same information you saw last month in their program review. Skipping to page 21, every year, we build our, our elementary supply budgets based on the enrollment and we have certain amounts per student that we use to build those budgets. This is very similar to prior years. Not really any change here except the numbers in the enrollment.
One thing I'll kind of point out, you may look at those totals and say, did we, are really projecting only to grow by one at those K5 grade levels? The reality is our, our fifth grade that's moving up is larger than the anticipated kindergarten coming in. So, all the classes in between, we're expecting growth, but they tend to zero out at those grade levels because of the smaller kindergarten classes we tend to keep seeing. So, the, the growth and the net growth is going to be happening at the middle school, high school level in this analysis because we have, you know, we have more consistently even larger classes at those grade levels.
The postage of $4 per student, where, where does that number derive from?
Our postage expenses, we use postage meter and so that gets paid, it's used at all the buildings. And we are able to take the information from the postage meter data and allocate actual expense across the district to the buildings, wherever this stuff was mailed from. So, in building a budget, we just allocate $4 per student and that usually comes pretty close to the actual expense.
And just from a practical side of this, our, our building and depart, our building level principals have some discretion here. We look at the overall total among all these funds, but if they want to go a little more in one area because of a need, they, if they've got another offsetting area, they have the, the flexibility to do that, so.
Do we, do we have a total expected, I mean, enrollment number that is being used in here somewhere?
Our weighted ADA is six, or excuse me, 5875, which translates, if I recall, into 6,067 enrollment number. So, it's about 94 and a half percent of that number.
Thank you.
So, it's about a 30 to 40 student growth over what our September count was this year. And then this, next item is a list we've been putting together for several years now and it's some of our, our line items that we can revisit as needed and will do so. But if, if we're in a position where we're using reserves, there are some of the places where we can make a choice every year on expenses that don't necessarily need to be recurring. Some of them should be and, and some of them in fact should be going, going up. What we haven't done yet at this point is gone through and scrubbed individual line items in our budget to say, okay, if we want to spend an extra 50,000 on math resource adoption, are there other parts of existing budget lines that we can take money from because it's not being used or no longer serves the intended purpose? That's part of what's going to need to still happen in the next 30, 60, 90 days. So, this, this gives you some sense of some of the bigger pots of money that we can go into if we needed to, not that we'd be recommending any one particular one of these right now, so.
What was our budgeted carryover from last year to, to this year?
In total, 14.2 at the end of this year.
Now, is that, is that outside of our reserve? I mean, what, what was the difference between what we budgeted and all the line items and what we actually spent?
Last year.
Last year.
We were within, I think, a half percent of total.
So, I have, so 300,000?
Yeah, I'd say that's pretty close. Little, we were a little over on revenue and a little under on expenditures, but combined, I bet it was within.
So, we, we spent from reserves?
Yes, yes. But he's asking what was our variance to budget and so that number was.
Out of here, I think?
It was relatively small. It was probably the tightest budget I've seen in my 14 years in terms of being accurate at year-end. So, I don't, I don't know if that's luck or good or what that means, but.
Why don't we just acknowledge it as skill?
Okay. Yeah. I don't know. I'm not willing to go that far, so.
Okay. Then following that is the scorecards, the overall scorecard followed by all the different program scorecards.
So, kind, kind of wrapping up from our perspective, I think what I heard tonight is we want to go ahead, in addition to the, some of the things we had on the list, we want to address the sub-issue and we were comfortable in general with the overall budget approach with the idea that we'd work with Team Ray Peck on some combination of salary insurance around 1.3 million. And I will, I will definitely qualify that. As I mentioned when we started, the assumptions in here aren't as firm as maybe they were last year at this time or the year before. So, I reserve the right to come back to you and/or Team Ray Peck and say, we've got additional information that would change this enough till we need to revisit this, so. I'm hoping not, but I'm trying to be realistic here.
And then on the insurance, we'll have more information at the March 30th.
That's our thought.
Maybe some different scenarios and options and opportunities.
Well, and, and would you open it up to, to staff to identify some other needs that that maybe haven't been presented to us at this point? Because I would like to see if, if there are true needs in the district and, you know, we have the ability to use 1% of our reserve, which, I mean, 1% is just, you know, I think until tonight, no one probably quantified it as saying 1% equals $600,000. You know, so when we pick a 20% number, what does that really mean? Well, it's just a number that we pick that we feel safe and we feel comfortable. It's all about feeling. So, if there are needs on the table and we can spend an extra 1% and invest $600,000 into meeting the needs, I would like to see what needs we can address, you know, and open it up and let us choose because that is ultimately what we are responsible for doing. I mean, and that's, and I apologize for the frustration, but if there are needs on the table and there's money to meet the need, in my opinion, we have the obligation to meet the need. I've always believed that.
And just to clarify, the 20% wasn't based on emotion and a feeling. It had factors behind it that we spent quite a bit of time on. So, I do take exception to that. I do agree with your point, though. If, you know, if anyone feels like they're, you know, there's a great need, but they were afraid to tell us, I think that would be interesting. I think we need to be careful completely opening it for any.
I'm not sure at this point in March what that process or timeline or mechanism would look like. I'm a little anxious about that. I understand the concept of, "Let's listen to what everybody has in mind." I'll be honest with you, our focus has been, we knew there was going to be a significant call on reserves this year. And I'm comfortable with the numbers we put in front of you. I'm hesitant to go much beyond that this year while we're doing this because we open our bids in two weeks. We may come back to you and say, "Okay, we've got another 400,000 in needs based on our bids that we need to address." That's where I think our focus, at least I think my focus needs to be right now is trying to keep those pieces in place. I'm anxious or not sure what we would do if we tried to open it up completely right now at this stage in the process.
You make several good points in there. And there was a process already where we did ask
That's what I was going to say. There was a process.
The important things to be addressed. So, there has been that opportunity already, okay?
Now, it's not a wide-open call to all staff. It's gone through the leadership team based on requests they might have had from staff or priorities that their buildings have, things of that sort.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone?
Thank you guys for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you very much. A very nice package. We appreciate it. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.